All right, well, with that being said, I'd like to call to order the zoning board of appeals regular meeting scheduled for August 25th, 2021. We'll go through our commissioners to establish a quorum which we have. I'm Stevie Antonio, I'm here. Josh Nicholson. Mark Freeman.
Here.
Ali Rice, sorry. I'm free, sorry. And Ram Kaza.
Yeah.
All right, with that being said, we have a quorum, so I'm going to turn it back to you, Tom, to introduce us to where we left off, please.
Okay, we have a continuation of a public hearing. This will be run in the format of a regular public hearing. We will have the updated town staff report. We'll go into the applicant's presentation. The public will have a chance to speak either for, against, or neither for nor against. Any, there is a final rebuttal of appeal to the applicant if there's any outstanding comments that were made during that questioning, and then we can take a vote on that. I'll let you introduce the application, Steve, and we'll go from there.
Okay, the application we're hearing is, we had tabled at our previous meeting on July 28th, 2021, and we are resuming application number 21-10 of Freedom Property LLC. Care of Luke Florian, applicant, Iron Horse LLC is the owner for variance pursuant to the Simsbury Center Code Regulation Section 2.4.2G to allow parking, a carport, and a dumpster all within a rear yard setback at the property located at 969 Hop Meadow Street. TJ, will you be presenting, or will who will be presenting on behalf of the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to very briefly tell you what the applicant would like to, round they'd like to cover this evening.
Please do, and then, and if, would you like me to do the staff report beforehand, TJ, the brief?
I want to make, yeah, that's fine with me, it's up to the chairman. I want to make sure that the staff report is fully into the record and fully available to all the commissioners, that's all I care about, but that's, that's up to the chairman. If he'd like it reviewed, I'd like it reviewed.
I'd like a review, yes, please.
Commissioners, I was out in your Dropbox and you were able to access that and review that. All right, if it's okay with you, TJ, can I brief it, or would you like it read into the record?
Please, please brief it unless the chairman feels otherwise.
No, it's fine, we have a copy, so, let's get it on the record, though.
Okay, in general, the town planner, Michael Glidden, submitting staff report. I am presenting in, in lieu of Laura Barkowski and Michael Glidden, and I have been trying to help out, unfortunately, she got hung up in another part of the country due to the tropical storm, so here I am again. This, the, I believe that they presented the general plan at the last meeting, to my understanding, and that the general plan is for a two-foot setback into the, to the yard, to the west, in order to accommodate parking carports and a dumpster. As Michael, as Mr. Glidden had iterated in his staff report, the staff can also take into some consideration visual screenings, say of shade trees like sugar maple or such along the western side, and any accommodations to the southern side for the commercial property as discussed in the previous meeting. There's been several bullet items presented to the commission to take into account on review, I'm sure that you will be able to disseminate what you would like to do. If there's, I don't believe there's much more to that, that change from the last presentation in consideration of additional parking to the rear and the, the movement, the removal of the pool, let's just put it that way. In brief, I think that's the only new thing, was any kind of accommodation for screening on the western, southern side, any kind of fence repairs, any kind of things along those lines.
Okay, yeah, no, that pretty much got it. Do any of the commissioners, Josh, Mark, Ally, and Ram, do you have any questions about the briefing? Did you get it in your Dropbox, just to make sure? All right, that seems unanimous. So with that being said, TJ, you want to take it from here?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, with me tonight are Bart Bobey, our engineer, and Luke Florian, the owner and developer of the site. We were, we would make one further note that the town staff, the town staff report does discuss the rationale for variance and the fact that in this circumstance, it's possible to prove that the location of the existing structure itself is, and the strict application of the rules may create a variance, and of course, that's for you to decide, but that's what he suggests. Our presentation is very brief tonight. We're here because the commission very properly asked, justify your variance, and for that reason, in a minute, I'm going to let Bart Bobey go through it with you and tell you why it's designed the way it is, why it doesn't have diagonal parking spaces and the like, which is, an engineer should tell you, not a lawyer trying to pitch a application. We'd also like to note that the record contains letters of support and condition from, from the Williamses, the southern neighbor, and from the western neighbor, Mr. Joseph. And at the end of our presentation, we're going to have Luke Florian tell you, embrace the, the spirit and letter of those laws and those reports and adopt them as part of his plan, if we're fortunate enough to get this variance tonight. So we feel that we've had good value of the opportunity you did to adjourn the hearing for, for the next, till the next meeting, we've gotten to have a pretty good understanding with the neighbors, and a better understanding of the site and what we got. For that, I'd like Bart Bobey to speak to you briefly and to talk about why his plan is justified by variance.
Yes, my name is Bart Bobey, a professional engineer with the firm of H.E. Colonsuns in Plansville, and I've done a lot of work on this site, we've looked at many different options to accommodate what Mr. Florian was looking to do on this property. The biggest concern obviously we had was the traffic flow and the parking. The plan that we came up with, we thought, provide the safest, most economical use of the property without really expanding the pavement and additional parking, so it covered the whole site. And I can explain it very simply. When we, originally, the existing property has parking on the, on the southerly side, and you can see the double rows of parking that goes up, I think there's even a picture available. When we looked at the rear portion of the property, though, unfortunately, we had a set distance to work with between the property line and the building. And obviously, the most economical way to park is with a double row, single aisle, parking on both sides, and that'll take 60 feet. We tried to find an economical way to set that in without really pushing the parking towards the building so much that you're rarely impacting the rear portion of that property, so that the edge of the property and the parking were going to be literally right under the decks of the units. We did look at one-way flow through that area, the problem with one-way flow is once you start putting angled parking in, and a misnomer is by angling by 15 degrees, you really don't get much economy in the width, because you still need angle, you still need your aisle width, and you still really need a pretty substantial area for your parking. Angle parking really becomes economical when you're looking at a larger bulk area where you've got aisle, I guess, aisle against aisle. But when you look for a single row and you introduce one-way flow, that means you've got to provide one-way flow around the entire site. And in our view, it was not economical, it was not safe, and provided a lot of headaches. So if we brought the one-way parking through the back of the property, obviously, we're going to lose parking spaces, and we've got to make those parking spaces up in another area. Like introducing one-way flow, that means you've got to have a circular flow around the building. And quite honestly, we did not think the town would be interested in providing a parking aisle in the front of the building, or you've got the road in the building, you've got a nice green space in there. This area to the north, the side yard to the building on the right-hand side, is relatively narrow, and that's uneven deep enough to provide an aisle and, and pull-in parking space, we'd have to do parallel spaces there. We wouldn't pick up many parallel spaces, and that would kind of force us to create a one-way flow across the front of the building with angled spaces to make up that. And in our, in our view, the aesthetics of that look, and what Mr. Florian was trying to do with that site, just didn't work. You, if you could imagine that driveway coming around and then intersecting that two-way driveway to an entrance, then we've also got a point of conflict with drivers entering that two-lane driveway or one-lane driveway, and then making the termination that is clear enough with cars entering off of Hop Meadow, there's not going to be a conflict there. We looked at turning the traffic around the other way, but that would mean you'd have to go through the front and the side of the building without having the majority of the parking to the, to the west and to the south, especially problematic for handicapped parkers who would then have to drive around the entire building, find there's no parking spaces, and then have to make a secondary loop around there. And, and we just thought that that was not, was not a good solution. Also, if you added the extra parking for the one-way flow, then you've got to deal with the added impervious surface and dealing with the runoff. And if you can see, I've got the, the staff report, supplemental staff report on our site plan, you know, we're kind of showing a, a single, kind of a bowl area in the front corner of the building that will handle all of our impervious surface and provide a zero area runoff. If we had to then lose that and put parking around the entire site, I figure that area would have to be about three times as big. Obviously, there wouldn't be an area on the surface that would be large enough, and we'd probably have to accommodate that into some kind of subsurface system. And again, a large subsurface system, that big, would be very easy to, to work with. Honestly, I'd like to see that building five feet over, give us enough room, establish the 10-foot rear yard buffer, provide a little more room next to the, the unit, but we just don't have it, that building really creates an issue. And I think if we brought this around with the points of conflict and the circular traffic around there, I think we're, we're really creating safety issues with people then having to deal with traffic around the entire building. So that's why we did what we did.
Okay, thank you for that clarification about the one-way traffic, that was a good lesson, I think, for us all. So do any commissioners have any questions right off the bat, or we could go to public comment depending on if you have questions that you want to address immediately, or we can have the public weigh in, so we have their input to embrace with our own comments? All right, I'll go one by one, Josh, you okay? Let's go in public first?
Yeah, that, that addressed all my questions I had from last time.
Ally?
I'm good, going to public comments.
Okay, Ram, Mark?
Same, I'm, I'm good.
All right, so with that being said, Seth, Joseph, I see you, I remember you live on Oxford Court. If you wouldn't mind reiterating your concerns, we'd love to have your input this evening. You are on mute, though, just so you know.
How about now, okay? Hear me now?
Yeah, yes, we can.
Hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. I talked to look, to, I talked to look at, and he went through everything with me. And the only issue I, I had was, was lighting, lighting and the height of the, the wall and the, I get, the carport should do a barrier for my back of the house, I guess, and there's, there's woods there, so.
Well, you're at a significantly higher elevation, if I recall correctly, is that true?
Yes.
So just to ask you point blank, would you prefer to look down at the top of a carport or at cars? Do you have any input there as far as what you would have for review? Of course, we can also ask them to put more of a buffer as far as landscaping in the form of trees, that's why I asked for your input.
Yeah, the, I think the carport would be better, because I won't see people going in and out of their cars and, yeah, noise.
Okay.
I think that, I think that would be better.
All right. And is there anything else you'd like us to consider while we're asking our questions and deliberating?
I noticed the back is sloped a bit, and the very back of it slopes up, so if it's level, maybe, I, I'm not sure what the wall will be, the wall will be eight feet, if they level it, it's going to be down lower.
Right, there will be some grade to it, but you're right, it's too significant of a gradient right now, so we'll definitely get that in our remarks and discussions to find out where that goes. And of course, until we close the public input, you are welcome to speak up, to start frantically waving your hands.
Okay, what I'm saying is, if they level it off, maybe the wall could be a little bit higher, I, I don't, just a suggestion.
Got it.
Okay.
Well, as high as possible. Or other screening, because it can't go above the carport, for obvious reasons. All right, and Mr. Williams, are you on a budding neighbor or general public?
I am a southern boundary.
All right, great, I apologize for not knowing that. Go ahead, if you could give us your input as to what you'd like us to consider and, you know, embrace as far, part of our discussions.
I, I have three major concerns that I had forward to, to TJ as well earlier today, as well as the town planner. My, my major concerns, I'm not sure if this is the position and time to talk about them, because you're considering a variance on a carport, so forgive my ignorance as far as whether this is the time to speak up on this, but being the southern boundary, I'm concerned about a, a fence that, that borders my property that's in disrepair. I'm concerned about trees that overlay my property that are extremely large, and in a couple of years, will probably be overhanging my roof. And I'm concerned because of, for instance, the hurricane we just had, I say my prayers and prayed that I don't come home to a, a branch in my roof. Needless to say, that's a place where I work, and I need that to be operational. Lastly, I'm concerned about, because as this, as this develops, as the property develops, I'm encouraged that I'll be looking at a better, a better view than I do right now. But by the same token, through 25-plus years of, of being in town, of which being at this present property since 2002, I've had the opportunity to see multiple different walks of life come in and out of the iron horse. And I'm concerned that I have a delineated boundary that basically lets the public know that this is not public domain, you might live here, might rent here, but not to say that you're not welcome, but I want to make sure that the public knows that where the boundary line is, where they can, where they can be and where they can't be. Needless to say, I have the safety of my patients that I have to be concerned about.
Understood. Um, if I might, go ahead.
One last thing, Steve, if I can just interrupt, just one last point I'd like to make, too, in addition to the repair of the fence, to further my point, I would love some type of, of, of screening, natural screening in the form of an arbivide, you know, I, I was specific just to, I've done it on my back wall to make it look more, more aesthetic, is four-foot arbivide spaced three feet apart, the length of my, my building. So that way, it, it further adds a screen that, that over time will be aesthetic.
For clarification purposes, are you talking about just the area, the length of your building, or your property line, just for a?
The building, I, I'm trying, I'm not trying to break Luke's piggy bank, I'm just trying to make it so when I look out the window, I have a little bit of natural view.
Okay, um, do you know, you might know the answers, who said, the existing fence you referenced, is that, a fence has to be on one person or the other person's property? Do you know where the existing fence, is it on your property or Luke's property?
It is on the, well, it's on Luke's.
Okay, I, I meant, I, I.
I know what you mean.
The purchase status, but, okay, great. So there is one other person I see on the screen, MI8SH3, I welcome you to speak publicly if you'd like to, and you don't have to if you don't want to, but I'm, I'll give you a few moments to respond, just as a courtesy. And I'm thinking you're just monitoring our meeting, which is totally fine, just making sure we covered all the bases, and that is everyone here. So let's go right into the commissioners deliberating, I'm not going to close the public comment part, because of course, we want them to be able to respond. Luke, did you want to say something?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to, you know, let Dr. Williams and Mr. Joseph know that I just, I completely understand where they're coming from, and I, you know, I can, your, your, your comments about screening and arbivides, I think is actually a really good idea. And so I'm going to take all those into account, for sure, as we're going through final design and planning. And, you know, I also want you to know, like, I'm a, I'm a local owner-operator, like, I'm not just this investor from, you know, another state, so I'm, I'm here. If you ever have an issue, too, as we're going through things, we need to make little adjustments here and there, like, I'm always available to you guys as well. But ultimately, whenever we end up planning, it's going to have to go through several different phases and approvals, but I will wholeheartedly take your concerns into account. And ultimately, I'm just looking to become a, you know, just ingrained in the community. I, I really like Simsbury, and this will give me a good excuse to spend some more time up there, so. And that, that's really, you know, I just, I support what you guys are looking to, to see happen over here, so.
I respect and appreciate that comment, thank you very much. We are looking to build our business community with like-minded conscientious individuals, so I appreciate that. Okay, let's hammer them down now, no, just kidding, Luke, I apologize. All right. So amongst the commissioners, do we have any comments for Luke or Bart? We brought the engineer here, if there's any questions, I'll start. There is a gradient to the back parking lot, that is substantial, I'm going to guess five-foot differential between the elevation of the western border of the parking lot and where the pool now lies on the eastern side. What is the plan with that? Because when, I, I got to, I don't have an elevation map, but I got to imagine it's a minimum of five feet and possibly more.
Well, I am looking at the map now, just the topo map, and it looks like about a six-foot difference between the pool height and the back property. We, we're basically putting the parking lot back down at the existing grade of the pool to minimize grading, and it's going to be at a 1% pitch for the 60 feet going back up to the, to the property line, and then you figure a five-inch curve, so you've taken off essentially about a foot, so the wall's going to be approximately about five feet high.
Well, that's the berm, we're talking about, are you going to do a retaining wall, I assume, to hold?
That's a retaining wall, back at, at the end, we're going to raise up five feet with the retaining wall.
And that retaining wall, due to the proximity of the property line, just for clarification, is how far from the actual rear property line?
Uh, we've got eight feet for the retaining wall, the retaining wall can be built, the reason we selected this retaining wall is it didn't, this method of construction in this product does not require a tieback, so Geo Matrix material to cut back, so we don't have to cut back into the hills, so this wall, this wall basically sits on a footing, and then very minimal pitch for the five feet, but there's no structural support that has to tie into the wall, the wall is self-supporting, basically. So when we put the footing in, the footing, the wall basically goes up at that eight-foot setback, and then we've got eight feet between the top of the wall and the property line, and at the present time, there is a, there is a wooden, a wooden privacy fence along the top, basically to screen the property to the, to the west and the pool area to kind of make a, a privacy of the pool. When we put the parking lot back in, we're going to basically take out that five-feet rise that is in the present location and build a wall at the end of it. So essentially, whatever people are looking at, coming from the west, they're going to see, just look over that fence the same way they've only happened, been. If they go up higher in their house, obviously, they'll look down into the area, and there'll be vehicles, but people walking on the ground will see that fence and will still see the, the, the old hotel building fixed up when Mr. Florian comes in and finishes the project. So really, you're not going to see much difference, you're not going to see with the privacy fence standing on the ground, you're not going to see the top of the, of the carport, you're going to basically see what you see, the only way you're going to see it is you go higher up in the building, and the second, and I don't know if there's a third floor of the house, but then you'll walk down back into the area that the pool used to be. But the privacy fence will either be, and I don't think we've even got this far, but will probably be replaced to have something more secure, that fence right now is about four feet off the property. So there's a lot of room to play in that eight feet, to put buffer materials if the commission desires and rebuild that fence and have enough room, so you're going to adequately screen that area.
Okay, how, how high is a carport? Forgive my naivety, but.
I, I'm not involved with design, my guess would be eight, nine feet, something like that.
So five feet is just to get you up to grade, so you're talking about three feet above, so four-foot fence technically would, Seth?
Does anybody test, test the soil? Because the, if you remove the dirt, or the lower, the ground, will, I wonder if it's going to affect the back of my house with settling, settling of the soil? Is that possible, if anybody looked at?
We, we have not done any soil tests in that area, five feet is not a significant area to regrade, and most of those wall systems can easily handle five feet, I don't think that's going to be a legitimate concern. If we're talking somewhere in the, in the 20-foot range, I think there's some issues there, but we're really, we're really not talking anything higher than up to my shoulders for the wall. So it's, it's not really a massive structure, it's just a way so we can extend that somewhat level area for the parking. And again, we're going to pitch that parking back towards the building, we're going to take a foot of pitch, or half a foot of pitch, and pitch it back, you know, so we've got the catch bases down adjacent to the building, so all that water will continue to flow down towards that area than around the building, so.
Because the street, Oxford Court had a lot of settling and things like that, you know?
Well, it's not Mr. Florian's, I mean, he's going to do the wall right, and there'll be a structural soils engineer who looks at the footing, and obviously, he's not going to put something, and it's going to crack, he wants something that's going to be, you know, there forever, because that's part of the condominium.
Okay, commissioners, what questions do you have? Seriously, I'll call on you, Josh.
I, I don't think I really have any questions, I think the explanation of the, the placement of the building is the, the key thing that I was, you know, I didn't hear last time that I think is really critical for showing that there is a hardship here.
Okay, um, actually, I'd like to ask a question again, sorry, I'll, I'll alternate. Is there a reason we couldn't put the dumpster at that bump out at the end of the parking lot further away from the southern tenant? Because that would, you know, a garbage truck's coming in with its forks, it's ideal where it is, but it is also within view of the southern tenant.
There is no reason that that could not be pushed further to the, the west of the site.
It reduces your, your request for a variance, which is one of the things we try and do, is to minimize the variance. So if we could put the dumpster somewhere else, that, that helps us, you know, gain, uh, minimalization of the variance area.
It, it could be put to the west. Uh, it would require the truck driver to have to make an extra, uh. Extra turn to the line to make that, uh, the pickup there, but, uh, that is possible.
Okay, thank you.
Um, for the commissioner's knowledge, I'd just like to let you know that this will go through at least a site plan and review. So if, even at a recommendation level, it can be presented to the, um, site plan review package. If you wanted them to see if it met standards.
Okay.
I, I would, I would point out, though, if we move the dumpster, we push it to the north. That parking would probably have to be extended across where that, uh, dumpster is located. So the variance would stay the same, but we just extend the park down to more, two more spaces to include that area, so. I'm sure there's a setback requirement on the west side for the side yard, so.
Of course, 25 feet.
For the dumpster too?
Um, technically, it's a movable structure, but Tom is nodding his head yes, so I'm thinking it's a yes.
It's an, it's an accessory structure, basically, sitting outside, so I'd probably err on the side of caution and say that it would need a setback variance on that if it was pushed too far.
It, it, it is going to have an enclosure, which is, which is a fixed structure.
It gets kind of permanent at that point. It's not just flat work.
We would be pleased, Mr. Chairman, if you, if you. If you are disposed to grant this, to defer that to site plan review. Where we're gonna have a full set of plans with more detail, and we're also gonna make sure that the neighbors. Have design elements in this that, that make them whole and happy.
Okay. Uh, so going back to the commissioners, one by one, if we could please, Rom. You're on mute, Rom.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm good, Stephen. Um, all my questions were answered today.
All right, great. Mark?
I, I think I'm good. I, I was, I've looked at all the documentation. I, I think that, um, you know, the Williamses have, have proposed some reasonable. Uh, requests. I think that this would be a big upgrade for them to have, you know, some, some really nice units in that. I mean. Let's be honest, anything's a real upgrade from the Iron Horse Inn, uh. So I think that, that that would be good and it would be good for them and, and it would be good for everyone that surrounds it and. I think that just from the letters, the emails, it looks like, um, you know, Luke met with the neighbor and. Uh, it just seems like a, you know, I'm not an expert in the, with the, with the, uh, uh. With the variances and, and everything like that. I'm still getting my druthers with, with that, but it just seems like everything's fair and. Uh, and it seems like a good upgrade to the town, so I don't really have any firm questions, uh, at this time.
All right, great. Uh, Ally?
Um, I'm also satisfied. I don't have any questions at this time.
All right, um, not to harp on it, but I want to further clarify for myself. So Tom, maybe you can answer it. The edge of the pavement, as it's shown in the northwest corner, is how far from Udoff's property?
In the northwest corner? Give me one second here.
That includes an approximately three feet bump out. I'm guessing on the three feet.
Um, the variance reads that, oh, for any additional, um.
The dumpster, I'm still, so.
Oh, you're still stuck on the dumpster. Okay, I got you. Um, I don't have a scale ruler with me and what I'm seeing is a shaded monument line. Um, so I'm assuming from scale and, um, please, Monsieur Bovee, if you have, uh. Have the proper tools in the map.
I can have a scale, but I would guess it's like 10 or 11 feet, perhaps, or 11.
Yeah, this is at inch to 20, so I would, I would say you got about 20 feet at the max, but.
New point. That's really all I needed to know at that point.
I mean, that's being liberal.
Okay, we're getting political on this?
No, just making, just telling you, I don't have a scale ruler and I just, I'm guestimating at that and I'm.
I agree. That's all I asked for was a guestimate. All right, with that being said, so Tom can't talk, I'm gonna close the public portion of this meeting. Um, thank you very much. All right, commissioners, it's time for us to deliberate amongst ourselves as far as one. And most importantly, is there a true hardship that exists? And if so, what we would like to include as a conditional approval of granting this variance? So we're gonna go back one by one, uh, seems to work for us. So Josh, you were at the beginning of the pack this time, so let's go back to you. Do you agree or disagree that a true hardship exists? And what do you feel as far as anything we should make conditional for the approval of this variance?
Yeah, I, I do think that, um, the placement of the building does lead to a hardship with trying to get enough parking spaces in here. Um, let me see. Uh, can you come back to me on the, um.
No worries.
The additional stuff.
Rom, how about you? You ready? You're on mute still? Rom, you're on mute.
Sorry, sorry, I was, uh, I was going back and forth on the documents, um. Uh, yeah, I mean, like Josh said, that's the only hardship I can think of, you know?
Okay, and we'll, we'll put in some conditions for the southern border as well as screening the western border. Um, it's my understanding, Mr. Udoff has not, uh, responded in any manner, so I'm assuming he's okay with this. Um, is there any additional conditions for approval that you would like to be considered?
Um, I mean, satisfying the neighbors' rebuttals, right?
Um, Steve, I think I hit you and I might have muted you, just so you know.
You wanted to mute me? Is that something you've always wanted to do, Tom?
Hey, it's the only opportunity I have.
Well, I knew you. It's not fair. All right.
I'm sorry about that.
No worries at all. Um, so Rom, we, we definitely, I don't know when it started muting, but I'm, I embrace what you've said and, uh, yeah, we're definitely here to make it, you know. Um, uh, encompass all people's concerns.
Yep.
Mark, how you feeling about this?
Yeah, I was, you, you know, you bring up Udoff. It's interesting that there's no rep from them, uh, you know, being such a big property owner in the area. But, uh, just looking at the map, you know, that there's like that. That recreation area with the grills and the, uh, you know, I don't. Is, is that all, that's all in code, right? There's nothing, there's nothing on the, uh, that has to do with that, with the property line to Udoff's property?
No, there's no issues over on the northern side.
Nothing is permanent.
Okay.
So it's, you know, you can put your grill wherever you want. If you build a shed around it, that's a problem.
Right.
And they do, they still do have the requirements for the center code on any accessory structures.
Gotcha. Yeah, I mean, it, it seems, it seems all reasonable to me, uh, and like I mentioned, you know, with the neighbors and. Uh, it, it seems like a big upgrade, you know, moving away from just the variance issue and, and the, uh, the hardship. Uh, it seems like a big upgrade for the town. Luke seems to be, you know, genuinely, uh, interested in, in upgrading the property, so. I don't really have anything else to add. In terms of, what, what was your second question there, Steve?
Uh, the conditions, uh, of approval, if there's anything beyond the concerns that were voiced by the southern and western neighbor. On behalf of the town, you know, we're supposed to look at from that point to standpoint.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think so.
Okay. Um, Ally? What do you got?
Um, I agree. I feel. With what everybody said about the variance and kind of reiterating, reiterating what Mark said earlier, I am new to this, but two feet is what they're asking. It doesn't seem like it's that much. And they seem willing to, uh, or Luke seems willing to, um. Address the neighboring properties' concerns and, um. I think I would like to see some sort of screen there. Whether it's trees or bushes, whatever, um, I'm looking at the staff report, the most recent one. And, um, the comments, additional trees such as sugar maples or similar. Deciduous trees can be proposed to help, and I think that's a good idea too, because it addresses, I guess, we're able to give people. Every, kind of address everyone's concerns and needs and give everybody what they want, and Luke seems very willing to, um. Work with that, which I think is great, and so I think that's really what I'm. Uh, would really like to see the most there, um, if we approve this, is adding those, that screen there.
I agree with you, but, um, you know, we, we do sometimes get into the kinds of trees and specifying something such as a sugar maple. Uh, could actually be a detriment to a neighbor. A sugar maple has tons of leaves. And as we all know, they're beautiful in the fall until they're all over the lawn. So I don't know, is personally, I would stipulate a sugar maple, um, I, I actually frown on sugar maples. So, uh, I think we leave it open-ended and let them, you know, fill it in with whatever they feel is appropriate as they'll be doing the maintenance and such. But I agree wholeheartedly.
Um, yeah, as long as there's a screen, I'm fine. Whatever trees work best for everyone. I'm just, would like to see the screen there.
Yeah, we're talking about, just for clarification between you and I, Ally, or as far as all of us commissioners. Um, we're leaning towards, if I'm hearing it right, that we're looking for trees on the western line. And arbor vibes on the southern line because of the trajectory of the view. Uh, higher, uh, items such as a tree, I don't know if you all have had the chance to go out there. But the bank between Oxford Court and the backyard pool is substantial.
Oh, yeah.
So an arbor vity would be a joke. You'd see right over it, even if it was a four-foot arbor buddy. If you're in the house, you're looking over that arbor buddy. Um, so I think trees are where we're gonna lean there. Is, is that cool with you, Ally?
Yeah, that's great.
Professional terminology, of course.
That's cool. It's cool.
All right, way. All right, Josh, you wanted us to come back to you. What do you got?
Um, I think definitely on the, the western border, it makes sense to have that, um. You know, breakup of the line of sight. Um, I'm not sure. Um, on the southern border, if it's something we should be mandating as part of the, um. The variance for the, the setback here. I mean, it's definitely something that I think. Is important. I would definitely, I feel like it'd be good if it was done, but I feel like that's more a design review board thing than a. I, I don't think it pertains, relates to the variance we're giving here. I don't, I don't know if that. Really affects it.
I think, um, um, Josh's line of thought is that during the site plan review, we can make a recommendation to them that they give proper screening to the south.
That, that was what I was going for.
And, um, address any fence issue that they have. Um, I'm sure Dr. Williams and Luke can, um, as they've discussed here this evening. Work out an accommodating plan to present during site plan review.
Right, cause this has to go through DRB and then zoning approval, correct?
Uh, it's got a site plan and, uh, because it's part of center code, I believe, on that would definitely trigger DRB. Um, there's not a lot of major changes from an aesthetic viewpoint, um, but it, it, uh, it will at least have a site plan review. Where these recommendations can be addressed and dealt with, um. On an approval basis through that process. Um, we're looking at the two-foot variance and accommodating that encroachment.
Yeah, and I, I just, I feel that there's, you know, that, that two-foot variance on the western border, I feel like that's. It's a loose connection to be adding stipulations on the southern border for a variance on the, on the western border.
I disagree, just from the standpoint that Dr. Williams brought up, it's his view. And if it's not there, it looks a whole lot better than if it's there. So I, I, I do find some connection between. Proper screening and the variance, because if you're granting the variance, you're creating a hardship for an abutting neighbor. So I, I think it actually, just the designation that it must be addressed by design review. Um, I think example, you know, I, I don't think we have to, no offense to. Dr. Williams, I don't think we have to stipulate at this stage exactly the item and the spacing and the fact that there should be funding. For dead trees, which we can stipulate as a part of design review. That opportunity is out there. And, uh, awaiting, you know, just, I think, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, we're really looking for just the general screening answer at this juncture.
I think a general screening would be proper, and I think your point is well-taken. I think you're correct, um, and, cause you do guy, you guys do look at some, um. Viewpoints that other boards don't. Um, so, yeah, um, I think a stipulation of screening, um, I think that this is. Not a, uh, issue that can't be worked out through the process as we move forward.
Yeah.
But I would stipulate the screening, proper screening would be the probably term I would use.
Yep, and, and it does fall under the purview, and we have people on design review that have, um, you know, a great understanding of what plan is which.
And our site plan review team will, um, would note that from your approval.
Okay, um. The, uh, so Tom, if we could continue discussing publicly, um. The replacement of the chain link fence, can we make that a condition of this approval? Because that's not aesthetic in nature. Um, they seem to have come to an agreement.
Um, I think that it can be spelled out on an engineered plan replacement of, um, fence moving forward if both parties are. I think they're talking. I don't believe we have the authority to say you have to replace something that's. Unless it's a blight issue, then zoning would take care of that, but, um, on the stipulation of just doing a ZBA approval for a two-foot encroachment. I, I would say proper screening kind of, um, can encompass some of that if it's dilapidated to the point of disrepair. Um, a request could be made to the zoning officer to, um. You know, fix their fence or replace their fence, so there are some, um. Other avenues to check that if we don't have the full authority to require it, so I would hope that, um, we can at least say proper screening. I think that would hopefully work for both parties and both parties seem to be amicable to each other at this point, so it's your call.
And again, we can make that part of design review, you know, it's, it's part of.
It's got, it's.
As you said.
Yeah, it's gotta be up to snow.
Exactly, so, Dr. Williams, you can't talk, but I, I do want to express that we are not ignoring your input. It's just. We have to put it in the, um, the proper, the proper board, um, and it will be reviewed. And I know the chair of design review very well, um, it's me. So I'm sure that it will be reviewed at that juncture. Um, and, uh. Again, the, the pruning of the trees, I just want to acknowledge everything that's in there. Um. This is something that's gotta be worked. We can't express an opinion on this. The way the law works is when that tree goes over the fence line, it is that property, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong. It's that property owner's right and ability to trim that limb. But you can't force an abutting neighbor to cut that limb off. Is that correct, Tom?
Um, the general, the general practice is if the owner of the tree and it's on their side of the property line, it is their property. Anything that overhangs that. Can be trimmed. I would highly recommend, um, the opinion of an arborist because you can't cause detriment to the tree. Um, if you make an adverse effect upon that tree, that tree becomes your liability to some effect. I'm not a lawyer, I can't speak for law, but this is a general practice that we discuss with residents of the town.
And if I'm not mistaken, just for further clarification on the law, as I understand it. If that tree limb does fall off that tree onto an abutting neighbor's property, the liability does fall with the person that owns the tree on their side.
It depends, it depends on the evaluation of the tree and any documentation. Quite frankly, um, we don't, uh, have laws that regulate mother nature. If a tree happens to snap. And it falls on your shed, on your property, it tends to be your insurer's issue and then between you and your neighbor otherwise, but. Again, I'm not a lawyer. This is basically my, um, basic understanding.
Yeah, no, I saw TJ nod his head too. That is the lawyer in the room, so. But that, again, just to bring it down home, I don't want to go down a rabbit hole. This is not anything within our purview we can act on tonight. As far as that, but I embrace the concern and, um, you know, hopefully it'll never happen. Um, the other concerns were brought up by the, uh, budding neighbor on Oxford Court. Um, they asked us to include downward facing lights. Again, we're back to the site plan and there will, no spillover of lighting will be allowed anyways. So this is something on another board we are going to address and make sure that no spillover on anyone's property. So this is something in another board we are going to address and make sure that no spillover on anyone's property. Um, is coming from lights. The dumpster, um, I tried to move it. I don't think we can move it. We'll keep it as far away from everything as we can. Um, again, it's gonna come down to the site plan. I think we will put a recommendation in our referral. Uh, that we recommend the movement of the dumpster and if there is a viable alternative, that will be addressed. Uh, during the site plan process. Um, I, I see a notation that security cameras have been, um. Discussed, but again, that doesn't come under our purview of a variance. Um, so that I think addresses most of the things. So with the commissioner's approval, I will put forth a motion because it's gonna be wordy unless somebody else wants to do this. I am totally fine with that. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve application number twenty-one dash ten of Freedom Property LLC. Care of Luke Florian, applicant, Iron Horse LLC owner. For variances pursuant to the Simsbury Center Code Regulation, Section two point four point two G. To allow parking, a carport and dumpster within the rear yard setback at the property located at nine sixty-nine Hop Meadow Street. This is a Simsbury Center Code Zone. Approval is for a two-foot variance to the parking setback along the western property line. In order to accommodate the construction of parking spaces, a carport and dumpster within the rear yard setback. The hardship demonstrated is the physical application of the regulations creates an undue hardship to enjoyment. And improvement of the property due to the, the placement of the building. In granting this variance, the board places the following conditions of approval on the application. In order to address visual impacts, the board requires, requires proper screening. Along both the southern and western borders of the property line. These specifics are to be determined by the Simsbury Design and Review Board as to which species and placement. They will also consider any fencing that is applicable. Number two, the approval is for the construction of expanded parking areas and one carport behind the existing building. If the applicant wishes to construct other carports, these will need to conform to setbacks, otherwise. Additional variances will be required. Number three, lighting is to conform in height and placement as per the center code. Lastly, number four, if the dumpster can be moved further from the property line and most. Importantly, out of the variance area, it would be appreciated. Okay, that was it. Someone want to second it?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Uh, there's no one to, uh, oppose or abstain, so it's unanimous. This variance is, um. Approved. Thank you very much. We appreciate your time and efforts.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mike and Seth, thank you very much.
Appreciate all your time.
Thank you. All right, with that being said, I'm trying to find my agenda. I apologize.
Um, you're just, I can help you out there, Steve. You're just on the approval of the June twenty-third, twenty-one minutes and the July twenty-eighth, twenty-one regular minutes.
All right.
Two sets.
Yep, I went through them. I have no notes on my copies. Did anyone else have the time to go through and, uh. Did they see any discrepancies or within reason misspellings? As long as the gist of our minutes are in order. I've never been a stickler for punctuation. Anyone?
I didn't see anything.
Thank you, Ally. Somebody spoke. Thank you so much. All right, so with that being said, I'd like to approve both sets of minutes from the July twenty-eighth. And June twenty-third regular meetings. Can somebody second that?
I second.
Thank you, Ram. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Is you, nobody's here to abstain or, uh. Object, so it is unanimous. We pass the minutes. Um, is there anything else anyone wants to talk about before we adjourn for this meeting?
Laura will be back at the next meeting.
Yeah, famous last words. Good luck with that, Tom. All right, well, with that being said, I appreciate everybody's time and efforts and I look forward to seeing you next month. Uh, oh, hold it. Who wants to make a motion to.
Oh, yeah, hello.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mark. Second someone?
Second.
Ally seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's unanimous. Thank you again.
Bye.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.
Good evening, everyone.